Welcome, everybody, to our council meeting today. If everybody would stand, I'm gonna ask John Matthew to come and open us in prayer, please. Now that he's retired.
Recently retired.
Does God hear retirees? I guess that's the question.
Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Fathers, we bow our heads before you. It is appropriate because you are an awesome God. We thank you that you're the one that has given us government and instituted it for the flourishing of human beings. We thank you for our government. We thank you for the city council, for our mayor, for the department heads. And we ask for them wisdom, humility, but forgive them through deliberation, unity. Fathers, you have blessed our community over the years. We pray that in the future, even greater blessings, as we honor and give thanks to you. We pray this with confidence, as we ask it in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Our diligence to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, John. John, don't run off. Don't run off.
Okay, you want to go ahead and... Mayor's got a presentation for John. He had his retirement party on Sunday. Some of us were not able to be there, and we wanted to do this proclamation today.
There wasn't room for me anymore. I'm okay. The building was packed. I don't know whether they're...
Time, Marson?
Couldn't lift. We're not gonna talk about that. I don't know whether there were that many people there to deal things that you were leaving or to regret it, but nevertheless, we think that was a very successful meeting. And I had a proclamation that I wanted to present, but there were so many people and such milling around, there's no way I could've got anybody's attention. So, I thought we'd do this today.
So, you feel like a preacher when you try?
I get attention everywhere, and some I don't want, but you know how that goes. John has been here for just six years, and it seems like a lot longer than that because he's involved in the community. He's definitely involved in the church and the activities of that church, jail program and what have you, and he's become a valued member of our community. So, just as a token of our appreciation and what have you, I came up with a little proclamation. Whereas Reverend John Matthew is retiring as pastor of Grace Presbyterian Church, and whereas he had been the pastor there for the past six years, and whereas in that length of time, he had been endeared by the service he rendered to both his church and his community, whereas he has been an inspiration and provided leadership in various projects throughout this area, and whereas he, being an integral part of this community, is encouraged to continue that activity during his retirement. Now, therefore, I'll let Mr. Chesser, virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of City of Fort Payne, Alabama, to hereby decree the city's gratitude for his service to our community, both spiritually and earthly. Thank you very much.
That is a thing of faith, to hand a pastor the microphone. One, I would like to acknowledge my wife, Kathy, who is here, and my brother-in-law and his wife, Bill and Donna Kenny from Charlotte. And I would just like to say this, and it will be a few words, not too many words, is we have lived in Alabama for about 27 years, 10 years in Mobile, 10 years in a little town called Bruton, then in South Alabama. So, we're almost honorary Alabamians. I think one of the greatest privileges of our life, outside of being Christians, is having been called by Grace Presbyterian Church. We love that church, and we love this community, and it is a wonderful place to live. It is a beautiful place to live. And the fact that we've only been here six years and would receive this kind of acknowledgement and have such a beautiful retirement reception says much more about you than it does about us, is it is a community that loves well, that supports people well, and we are just thankful to be here. So, this is really a declaration more about you than it is about us, but we are most glad to be here, and hopefully, we will only transition and perhaps God will use us in various ways in the future. So, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, John, for your dedication. Most of all, for your friendship. All right.
I wanted to welcome a group here from Livingstone... I always say it wrong. Livingstone Ministries. Terry Davis, I believe, has his class here. Is it a government class or...?
Just some students that are interested in learning about local government.
If you guys would just stand up so we can see your faces.
Oh, we can embarrass you real good. Thank you, guys, for being here.
John indicated that he would bring some students from time to time, which I think is a good idea.
All right, first thing on the agenda is citizen participation. Erin Franklin, representing...
Minutes.
Oh, minutes. Sorry about that. Got a motion second. For the minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, now we need to pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Getting a little bit carried away here. We'll get the council meeting over with today, I guess. All right, first on citizen participation, Ms. Erin Franklin, representing the Muscular District, is here to make a presentation to the fire department for their efforts for MDA. So, Erin's here.
Thank you to the president, council members, and Mayor Chesser for allowing me a minute on your agenda this morning. I'm here to recognize the Fort Payne Fire Department for their continued and dedicated support of the Muscular District Association. They have been dear friends to us for many, many, many years, decades, and we look forward to continuing that relationship. And as just a token of that appreciation, I would like to make a presentation that she said, right, if that is okay? Just a small token. Thank you so, so very much. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any committee reports? Anybody?
I've got a couple of things. I talked with our insurance company last week. Hopefully, by the end of this week, we'll have some kind of settlement as far as the public works building. Spoke with one of the adjusters who is handling the contents yesterday after he met with Tim. He's gonna submit his report today, so as I said, by the end of the week, we ought to be a lot closer knowing where we're gonna stand as far as the repair of that building. A decision we're gonna have to make is, are we gonna repair it or are we gonna tear it down and rebuild it? That's something y'all are gonna have to decide. It's not gonna really matter with the insurance company. They're gonna pay us X number of dollars as they see fit.
Do you think we need to wait until we find out what that X number of dollars is?
Well, if the choice is to tear it down and rebuild it, we can save about a month, six weeks' worth of lead time in going ahead and starting that process now.
I agree.
And then, if the building, should we choose to go that route, the cost of the building, if it exceeds the money that we get initially, we have a cap. It's like y'all's home insurance. You have actual cash value when you have a loss. They'll give you money for the actual cash value. Then, as you replace it, if it goes over that, you'll get the depreciation.
But do we have any estimates on the repair?
No, they haven't submitted anything.
I asked Tim to look into getting some kind of rough estimate, what it would cost if we rebuilt it, just for, you know, just something to compare.
I would suggest that you at least start the process of evaluating what the repairs would be and what you would have when you're finished, and whether or not it's a safe, appropriate, and useful building, or whether... I don't know that that's... It's tied to the money. It's tied to what kind of building you're gonna wind up with when you finish. And we could start that part of the evaluation without ever making a decision whether you're gonna tear it down or repair it. I think that's what Andy said, is we need to start the process of making the decision so that when you know the answer to that question, you can proceed with doing whichever is appropriate.
When we saddle with them, will they separate building as contents, or it's going to be just one lump sum?
They'll have two determinations. Now, whether or not they write one check or two, I don't know, but there will be two determinations.
I just wanna... Sorry. I just wanna replace our Christmas decorations that we lost.
Yeah, I think that's not a question any of them are gonna argue with.
Well, I know... I wanna clarify, Lynn, you're not suggesting we tear down the building and only have Christmas decorations?
No, 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 no. I just wanna make sure we get the big wreaths and the deer back, but...
I think... I've been talking to Tim a little bit about it, and I think if we can, we could probably save some money by saving the slab, tearing down the building, and maybe going back to the middle building and that type of thing.
I should have a modern, well-insulated building.
I agree.
And it would be configured to what he actually needs instead of...
Have garage doors on it where you can call in bags and the visual. I think that would be far and above better. It may be cheaper than trying to tear it down and salvage part of it, because it'd take you longer to tear it down than trying to salvage part of it.
So, what do you need? A motion?
No, no. I just need y'all to make the decision on how we're gonna proceed with that, because as I said and Rocky reiterated, if the choice is to replace the building, I can start on that process now.
I think we need to sit down, have maybe a work session with him, and get his idea.
Get his idea.
Yeah, probably.
I should have a price on the middle building by Friday.
You still talking about offices and then...
What do we have in our next work session with the architect?
April 1st.
We can talk down that day, bye.
Is that okay?
I got a couple more things. Robin and Brant had in the budget to buy a tractor to be utilized at the complex. They had budgeted $21,000. Brant spoke with the gentleman out here at Sneed Ag, and was under the impression that the tractor was on the state bid list. After investigating that and trying to find the paperwork to put with the bill of sale, should likely the route that we ultimately went, that quote was not for a tractor on the state bid list. It was for another tractor, and it came in at $20,000 and change. Of course, to buy that, we've got to bid it. I spoke with the gentleman that is in charge of placing their equipment, tractors and whatnot on the state bid. I asked him to give me a price for what was listed on the state bid list, and it was $27 and change. So, that's y'all's decision, do we wanna spend the $7,000 more dollars to do a budget adjustment or the process. It's a heavier-duty tractor.
So, it's not the same tractor? Not the same tractor as a $20,000 one?
What horsepower difference is it?
What...
What horsepower difference is it?
I think the horsepower is the same. It's just the other configurations that what he told me was a heavier-duty, different model number.
Got more hydraulics or something on it?
I've not seen the one that Andy's talking through. The one that I have is a 38 horse. It doesn't matter. I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention.
Where and bought it at?
No.
Okay.
All right. Let me use this as a time to remind everyone, when you think something is on the state bid list, come see me, and let's... We got to find it, because if you scroll, and he knows, you can scroll through a vendor's listing on the state bid list, and he may have 100 different models of something that you think you want on that, but it's got to match exactly, model number, and every other specification. So, before you commit to doing that, come down here and let's look and make sure we can print off the paperwork to go with the invoice that we would be served with when we bought it, because the first questions that are asked when the auditors are here, where's your paperwork for this? Well, they're not gonna be satisfied with it comes off the state bid list. You've got to print off what is actually posted on that website to verify what you paid, it's what they listed it for. So, just to save a lot of backtracking, that would be good if you could just come sit down with me before we get that far along in the process.
How long does it take to go through the bid process? Month?
And after sitting in Andy's office, talking with that company, we're not real sure if we go to bid that they'll give us that price.
Well, if we bid it, we don't have to accept it. We can turn it down.
It's need to build specifications of what you want, and then we run it both ways. If we find something on state bid, okay, we have to bid the bid.
But just for $7,000, I'd rather bid it.
That's pretty good, but difference in tractor.
It sure is.
I would suggest that you go ahead and authorize bids today, so that if, after you look at those two, you decide that you're gonna bid it, they can proceed. Otherwise, you're gonna be two or three weeks, and then you're gonna have to authorize bids, and then you're gonna send them. But if you authorize the bids today, and it turns out that the $27,000 tractor is the tractor you need, then you can write off the bid list. You don't have to bid it, but if not, then it's ready to be bid.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion to second to authorize the bids. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carry.
One more thing. Y'all have been talking about buying baby changing stations or whatever you call them. Price on that's gonna be about $2,475, and the question was asked whose budget it comes out of, and Jessica and I talked this morning, it's gonna come out of wherever they're placed, whatever department's budget. But is that a budgeted out? So, we'll need to do a budget adjustment from there?
We're gonna do...
I thought we were gonna do it today.
I think that represents about $11.
The $2,400?
Yeah, about $2,475.
Representing Zawa?
Yeah. Got 11 of them. So, if y'all are good to prepare a budget adjustment for Dex, Dexter?
Maybe for the wrecked part?
Call in our building. The rotary pavilion.
Something we've been asked to do for a long time, we just kept putting it up.
We're trying to put them in men and women's restrooms, because so many dads have their kids.
While we're on committees, does any of the department heads have anything? All right, moving on down to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2019-16, amending resolution 2019-5, which granted tax abairance to Project Scout, now known as the Valley Joyce Project, also approval for the memorandum of understanding needed.
Hopefully, get closure on this, and... And before we get into this, the president, vice president of Valley Joyce, they're in the body, they actually wouldn't be here, but he did send a letter for the mayor to read, and I'll let you go ahead and...
Now, before I do that, this has been one of the cases that where we're trying to keep our existing industries. We are constantly working to bring other industries in and what have you, but we don't want to lose what we've already got, and this is a case where that could've happened. So, I definitely appreciate everybody's working on the behalf of this, and this is what he's saying. This was Thad Chapman, who is the manager there. On behalf of Valley Joyce and Dex employees and ownership, I would like to express our sincere appreciation to Jimmy Durham... Jimmy put that in. And Pam Clay, obviously, the Gaff County Economic Development Authority, for their tireless effort in coordination and patience through this project, and it has been a long process. Thank you to all of Fort Payne's utility providers and partners, to the entire city council, city attorney, and the mayor for their contributions and interest in keeping Valley Joyce and Dex in Fort Payne. This is not only a great improvement to Valley Joyce's operational capabilities, but also a great opportunity for the people of Fort Payne and the future of Valley Joyce employees. And that was from Thad Chapman, VP of Operations. We are... I think they'll be here for years to come, and there'll be some additional employees that will definitely help us. They also had a press release, which I think Jimmy will distribute to those at newspapers and what have you.
Mayor, I'd like to just say one thing, just to... Valley Joyce has been in Fort Payne for approximately 25 years, so they're a longstanding partner in Fort Payne, and we did find out that they were looking at other locations in Tennessee, Virginia, Georgia, Louisiana, and we just did not want them to go. They basically bring in about $12 million a year just in wages to our community, and about $15 million, $55 million all total. So, they bring in a lot of money to the city of Fort Payne, so it was really very difficult to let a company like that go. It's hard to replace a company that big. One that's really committed to Fort Payne, Mr. Chapman, he really didn't wanna go anywhere else, so he's really worked hard with their parent company and making sure that they stayed in Fort Payne. And, of course, y'all worked very hard, and I certainly appreciate it, and all the help of our utility companies. Again, I think this is gonna be a huge asset to continue for Fort Payne. And right now, I guess what we need to do, we passed a resolution under Project Scout, and that needs to be changed over to Valley Joyce, and you gotta let Rock pick up.
Well, the first thing to do is just approve the amendment of the abatements. This is not passing anything you hadn't already passed, but because it was in the development stage, it was passed under Project Scout instead of under Valley Joyce. And now that it's out in the public, you just need to amend that.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second thing is, and I just want to say that I think what the newspaper ought to pick up is, number one, through the cooperation of all the utilities, Jimmy's office, the State of Alabama, and this city council, and the Fort Payne Industrial Development Board, not only have you saved approximately 150 jobs, but we have the promise of adding 50 new jobs within the next five years. We have a... And I am not gonna hand this out today, because there may be some minor adjustments. One of the things that we have not completely done our due diligence on is, we've got to let Tim look at the dates they put in about when certain work's gonna be accomplished and make sure that those dates are acceptable and can be done. But other than that, we have a memorandum of understanding that's in front of each of the councilmen, and we've hammered out over the course of several months, and I just... I think that everybody needs to understand that I think when this process started, there was more of a likelihood that Valley Joyce was not gonna be here than there was that it was gonna remain here, and through the efforts, the combined efforts, and I just can't talk enough about all the people that put in great time and effort. Includes everybody sitting at this table. It includes Jimmy and Pam and their staff, includes the folks there, includes Tamara sitting over there who did a lot of work on this. She can read, and that helps me since I can't.
She can all the time.
They'd tend to approve this.
Well, what we need to approve it is that it's approved, and that approval will become final once I vet the dates that need to be vetted with Tim. Some of the highlights, they have promised to add 15 new jobs by two years from the effective date, 30 by three years, 45 by four years, and 50 by the fifth anniversary date. They're gonna be spending approximately $8 million to do a new deal. They are clearly expecting to do this, because one of the questions that always comes up, and one that you will want to know the answer to, is what happens if they don't do that? If you look on page six, the callbacks, as they are called, for... They have to get to 80% of their goal of adding jobs. For each job they don't add, and that 80%, they are required to pay the city of Fort Payne $20,000. So, if there's 10 new jobs, 10 jobs that they don't get to of the 80%, then they'd pay $200,000 to the city of Fort Payne. They have entered into something we don't see very often, is a continuous operations commitment. If they don't, if they're not in operations three years from the date of this effective date, they'll pay the city of Fort Payne $1 million. If on the fifth anniversary, they're not in operation continuously, then they're gonna pay us $800,000, which will cover, more than cover, the expenses of what we're gonna do from then. For the newspaper, what we are going to do for them through the Industrial Development Board is we're dividing a 39-acre piece of property, which is out near Ferguson, on Jordan Lane, where all the utilities are cooperating in getting the utilities to their plant, making whatever changes are necessary. Hopefully, out of this, we'll develop some state grants that will allow us to continue to improve our roadways and our utilities, particularly at the intersection of Highway 35, Airport Road, Jordan Lane. We're going to do some help with site work, dirt work. We're going to... Our department's gonna help them with training if they need it, and we're going to help... I think I said site work, and then we're gonna help them by meeting the normal examination fees and building fees, et cetera. So, it's a great package for us. It's not particularly expensive for us, but we maintain a $12 million a year payroll. We're gonna increase that payroll by approximately 33% in five years, and we retain one of our core industries, and it's as valuable to keep them as it is to get new ones.
Especially if they're growing. So moved.
Here, we got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Just to get you back on, it's Jordan Road, Jordan Lane's in Huntsville.
Well, you know, there's a lot of times I just don't know which road I'm on.
Right now, just I'd like to say one more thing, is that portion, that property just located onward one of our TBA investment projects, and TBA has given the city $258,000 in grants to prepare that site, to have it ready for industry.
Well, and I guess we need to add to that, TBA's participation in participating in this relocation, so they're not... Never mind. We discussed a lot of things, some of them didn't...
Thank you, guys, for your hard work.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank y'all, and we appreciate it, and hope we'll be worth a lot more.
And I'm sure the 150 employees are prepared to...
Yeah.
Yeah, they were totally a nice week, but they were gonna stay here, so thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much.
And one other thing, too, let me say, the governor signed off on the state's offer, which is totally different from the city, but grants... And one other thing, too, let me say, the governor, uh, signed off on the state's offer, which is totally different from the city, but grants them considerable amount of, of incentives, and we asked him on a, I think Monday, and the governor had it signed on a Friday on the incentive package, which is, uh, extremely rare that it ever goes through that phase. But anyway, the, she was very supportive of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on down, resolution twenty nineteen dash seventeen, declaring four police department vehicles surplus. Got a motion to second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carry. Alright, moving on to new business, alcohol license application, a consideration for approval of issuance of alcohol license for San Jose Fine Mexican Restaurant, located at nine oh four Galt Avenue North.
So moved.
Got a motion to second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
This was actually just a change of ownership.
Same place.
Yeah.
Next is board appointment, uh, Neil Baines' term on the Fort Payne School Board expires June the first and has only served one term, this appointment must be made in April.
I'm gonna reappoint him next month and not go through applications, Neil's done a great job, I think it's just a waste of people's time to apply, we know we're pretty well gonna point him back, so.
Do you have to wait until April end, or can we do it in March? I know it has to be done by. I think, I think if you want to make a motion to do that, you can just do it today. And if you can't, I'd like to do it.
Well, cause merely we've always taken, like, uh, yeah.
We haven't done it, I haven't done it.
If we feel like we're gonna put him back on, yeah, it creates hard feelings, I think. And he's only served one term, and I, I think you really only get to know what's going on with one term, and he'll continue to do a good job with his second term.
He, using my other hand as the school board attorney, uh, Neil does a great job, and is a valuable asset to that board.
Right in the middle of building a new school, and we got a lot going on.
That's true, too.
There we got a motion to second to reappoint, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I abstain.
We can't help, he's gonna be. How do you feel, Brian?
Well, we come to the real story.
Neil's overcome a lot, his life.
Okay. Streetlight request, we have Matt Hood at fifteen oh two Galt Avenue South, and Gary Cole at sixteen oh one Dean Road. Randy, you wanna speak to either one of those?
Yeah, I was asked to try to explain, uh, the Matt Hood street light down there, right now there's a light on the south corner of their parking lot, it's actually turned toward their parking lot. I don't know if it's on their bill, or if it's on the city's bill, but in my opinion, that light needs to be turned back toward the street. I don't know if it's on their power bill, if it's actually on the city's, I, I don't know.
I don't think it is, I think it's been a street light, it just got put up that way.
For somebody's, it's turned the wrong way.
What does it need to be? It needs to be a street light?
It's a street light there, it's just turned toward their parking lot, it needs to be turned back toward the street.
So what is Matt asking for?
He just wants that light turned back around toward the street.
It got cut off during the changeover.
When we found that, there were some lights, we were paying for that.
Cause it was turned the wrong way, it got cut off. And, uh, I talked to Sam, and he's talking about putting one just like the rest of it out through their place in the street. It is pretty dark down there.
And on the other one, um, the Cole one, I haven't seen it yet, so I'd like to set it aside, give you time to go look at it, and make sure.
Table that one?
Yes.
Motion on the first, and we'll wait on second, third.
They got a motion to second to approve the Matt Hood streetlight request, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's actually barbecue plus.
Yeah, barbecue plus. We will put the Gary Cole light on, still on the table. Alright, Independence Day celebration, the intended date has been set for Tuesday, July the second, with a makeup day of Wednesday, July the third.
Yes, I, I talked to the, the power company, and they said they had those dates set aside for us, and I know we haven't talked about it yet, but we're getting awful close to not have something set up, and I was afraid we were gonna lose the date with them, but didn't, so. I proposed Andy with it last week, and we can move on this real quick.
That council meeting day? Firework, during council meeting, it's council meeting. I'm fine with it, too. I'll make a motion.
Got a motion to second for July the second, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carry.
And y'all still won't leave at the same time, correct?
Whatever we budgeted for.
One dollar under fifteen thousand, so it don't have to be.
That was good to me.
I did price check it, that's still a real good bill for, for what they give.
It was good last year.
Okay, Mayor, you got anything for us?
Just a couple of things, uh. Just as a matter of information, and y'all probably already know it, but you know, the league is doing a conference call every Monday at ten o'clock. And, uh, I've got the numbers that you can dial in with a code and everything, and they're giving us an update on the legislative process, what has been introduced, and how it's standing in the committees and all, it's really good. Usually lasts ten, fifteen minutes, unless somebody's got a lot of questions, and then of course. So anybody that, that is interested in that, I give them the number and the, and the code, because it's, uh, it's worth your time.
What time on Mondays?
Ten o'clock. Ten o'clock every Monday. Now, it, they may not do that when they're not in session, but while they're in session, I know it's there, and I've had three of them thus far. I have been asked by, uh, the Department of Revenue, just to summarize this thing. Each municipality in the county, uh, shall nominate one person to serve on the Board of Equalization. And Fort Payne, as the largest city in the, uh, two, uh, county, nominates three. And I think out of those, that there's three selected to serve on that board. And basically, that's just, uh, it meets like once a year, uh, for like one week a year or two, here, uh, people that are, uh, disagreeing with their property taxes and what have you. So, I'm just asking you to be thinking about that, and, and some people that we think would be, uh, interested in doing it, and talk to them before we send them. I doubt, seriously, that we wouldn't, at least one of the three that we nominate would go on the board.
This is a lot more important than it used to be. And there was, there was a period of time where, uh, if your property was assessed at fifty percent of what it was really worth, it, it, that was high. I tried a case within the last couple of weeks, where property values were an issue, and we had appraised values, and then we had, uh, the values of the DeKalb County Assessor's Office. The Assessor's Office's values that they placed on that property was forty percent higher than the appraiser said it was worth. And most people never look at that, most people just pay their bill and go on. But it was significantly, uh, higher than the, than the property appraised for, or with cell phone. Uh, so I think it's really important, we get somebody very qual- our three people need to be very qualified, 'cause it's gonna be an important job going forward, more than it has in the past.
I will say that, uh, I agree with what Rocky says. Uh, I don't think this is so much, uh, our local office as it is statewide office, so, you know, we can't blame Tyler too bad for doing this, because they're doing it according to the guidelines, but we, we've got the opportunity to contest it, uh, on an individual basis, I don't know that we can contest it over the entire thing.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, I wanna make clear that it is, they put a process in, uh, that, that just sort of automatically raises things up, whether they really go up or not. And, 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 and the local tax revenue commissioner's somewhat tied, so I wanna make sure that that wasn't thrown in the bricks at Tyler's, he's doing a great job.
And this is a four-year apartment, it's been being a one-year apartment, I think this is a four-year apartment. No, this is, is not a paid situation.
That's all I.
That's all you got? Alright, uh, you, Brian, the audience, got anything for the council today? If not? Got a motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye?
Aye.